Order for the July 24th voting meeting. Hurley and Rides, for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which has its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got a roll call Jim?
Yes, Dr. Anderson. Mrs. Caldwell?
Here.
Mr. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Kohler?
Here.
Mrs. Rossler?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Schlock?
Here.
Mr. Wisnewski?
Here.
Mr. Zuko?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any citizens' comments on agenda items? Okay, I'll go, if not, I'll go to the president's report next. Plum Borough School District is, they will be purchasing Chromebooks for students in grades nine through 12 to help enhance their learning, and these are already in the technology budget. The Plum School Board is also, you know, continuing to emphasize and being proactive about school safety. We are going to be moving to an armed school police officer program. There'll obviously be a gradual process, you know, moving forward towards the fall. And along with education, Plum School District continues, obviously, taking safety as a top priority that we take very seriously. We will be approving a request for qualifications for a needs assessment to better prioritize, you know, which capital projects we're going to need to move forward to, you know, a best needs basis and prioritize which are most important moving forward. And I, this request for qualifications for needs assessment will be at no cost to the district. The Plum School Board is, will be soon hiring Ms. Charlene Payne as our new executive assistant to the superintendent and communications specialist slash board secretary for the school district. This is all part of the new reorganizational chart that our new superintendent, Dr. Highland, has implemented that will better direct the educational process for both the students and administration, as well as be more cost efficient for the district compared to the previous organizational chart. And moving forward, that's, Dr. Highland will now, will next give the superintendent report.
Mr. Schlock, thank you. This evening will be a significant and impactful night for the students and families in the Plum Borough School District. The board will be casting some critical votes that I believe will help to ensure that our students are as safe as we can make them while at school and provide them with the tools they need to be exceptionally prepared for success. And also, we are going to hire some quality human beings tonight who will demonstrate integrity and professionalism with a sincere focus on putting students at the center of all the decisions that they make. The board will vote tonight on arming a school police force in the Plum Borough School District. Our goal is to eventually have an armed police officer in every school in the district. The Plum School Police will be in addition to Officer Little, who is our current SRO from the Plum Borough Police Department, and this will provide an extra layer of security on top of having the SRO. This decision was given a great deal of thoughtful reflection and consideration. Unfortunately, our world is changing, and there have been far too many senseless tragedies in schools where parents and communities are forced to ask what else they could have done to keep their students safe after a needless and senseless tragedy. We don't want to ask those same questions in Plum. So, we will be asking the board to grant the administration the authority to find personnel that will keep our most precious individuals, our students, safe. The vote tonight and the addition of armed school police will not be the end of our actions on safety. We are working on implementing the findings from our safety assessment, and we are investigating other solutions that will keep the Plum Borough School District on the cutting edge of safety for our students. We will also look to continue to build bridges and healthy relationships with our students and between our students as well, as those relationships are just as critical to the overall safety of our schools. We are committed to continuous improvement in this area, and it's our number one goal as outlined in our proposed strategic plan work. I would like to personally thank the chief of the Plum Borough Police Department, Chief Armstrong, for his expertise in assisting the district in our procedures. I would also like to thank Mayor Schlegel and the borough manager, Mr. Thomas, for their advice and knowledge as we move through this process. The cooperation and mutual trust that is building between the district and the borough is something that our entire community can be proud of. A big thank you to Dr. Walsh for doing the legwork on the initiative while he continues to transition to the district. Unfortunately, he could not be here tonight to get the recognition he deserves for his hard work. Finally, a thank you to Mrs. Rossler. She has pushed relentlessly to make sure this happened, and I'm glad that we got this done on your watch. On the educational side tonight, we are hoping the board will approve the Chromebook lease on the agenda for the students in grades nine through 12. If we want the students from our district to be exceptionally prepared for success and compete in a global economy, we must provide them the skills and the tools necessary to do so. To leave high school without having an assured experience with technological tools that they will be asked to use in college and beyond is unacceptable if we are to be a great district. If we can provide the board and the teachers with laptops to collaborate, communicate, research, and learn, I would submit that our students deserve the same consideration. It was suggested at the discussion meeting that technology was not necessary and will not increase levels of student achievement. To the contrary, when our students were asked if technology helped them learn in the student surveys they were given, an overwhelming number of students said yes, that it would. I think the students almost always know when they learn best. Let's meet them where they are as learners. And that concludes my report tonight, Mr. Schlock.
Thanks, Dr. Highland. Moving to Personnel Committee, Mr. Kohler, chairperson for the Personnel Agenda. Recommend approval of resolution number 2018-7-24-1 to eliminate the position of executive assistant to the superintendent.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval, recommend the approval of resolution number 2018-7-24-2 to create the position of executive assistant to the superintendent and communications specialist.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of resignation of John Sahorcheck as the Plum Borough School District Board Secretary effective August 31st, 2018.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval to hire Ms. Maria Fight for the assistant principal position at O Block Junior High in Holiday Park Elementary at the salary of $80,000 with a start to be determined upon her release from her current position.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to welcome you to Plum School District.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose?
Do you want to do the introduction?
Be fantastic. Can I do an introduction?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Ms. Fight, would you like to come up to the podium? First off, let me say congratulations on coming to the Plum Borough School District. We do have some nice words that we're going to share about Ms. Fight. The Plum Borough School Board is pleased to announce the appointment of Ms. Marie Fight to the assistant principal positions at Holiday Park and O Block Junior High School. Ms. Fight has been serving students, families, and communities since 2001 at different places along the East Coast. Ms. Fight is a graduate of both Hemphill Area Senior High School and Indiana University of Pennsylvania, where she obtained a bachelor's degree in elementary education. She has worked as a teacher and an academic facilitator for both the School District of Palm Beach County and the Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. While serving in Charlotte Mecklenburg, she worked as a dean of instruction and participated in Emerging Leaders Program. She has trained with the Teachers College at Columbia University and Relay Graduate School of Education in New York City with Paul Brambrick-Santoio. Ms. Fight served as an academic advisor and adjunct instructor at Westmoreland Community College. Most recently, she served as a literacy academic coach for the Pittsburgh Public Schools. During her years away from Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh area, she obtained her master's degree in organizational leadership from Gonzaga University and also pursued school, a school administration degree from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. Ensuring student success has always been a driving force for Ms. Fight. She has led turnaround programs as well as traditionally successful schools, and she will bring a variety of experiences and knowledge that will enrich the Plum Borough School District. Ms. Fight has high expectations for students and staff and will maintain consistent accountability for all. She believes open communication and transparency will be critical elements to the overall success of her tenure with the district. She stated, "My goal is to be part of the greatness that is Plum Borough School District. All of the pieces are being put in place, and I believe with an unwavering certainty that the Plum Borough School District will create the most exceptionally prepared and successful students in the nation. The work will be challenging, but our students, families, and community are beyond deserving of the effort." Please, everyone, join us in welcoming Ms. Marie Fight to the Plum Borough School District.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I just wanted to, you know, really let you know that I'm excited about this opportunity. I think Plum is an amazing place, and I'm really excited for all the great things that are going to happen here, so I appreciate the opportunity, and I look forward to a great adventure, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome on board, thanks. That motion passed, right? Yeah. Recommend, recommend the approval to hire Ms. Charlene Payne as the executive assistant to the superintendent and communications specialist at the salary of $51,000 with an effective hire date of August 1st, 2018.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes.
Ms. Payne, it's your turn.
Welcome.
The Plum Borough School Board is proud to share the appointment of Ms. Charlene Payne to the role of executive assistant to the superintendent and communications specialist for the Plum Borough School District. She stated, "I'm excited," I stated, "that I'm excited that Ms. Payne has returned to the southwestern Pennsylvania and has joined my leadership team to assist us in communicating a new direction for our district and to share with all our stakeholders and community how we are exceptionally preparing our students for success." A native of Monroeville, Ms. Payne comes to the Plum Borough School District from Duluth, Georgia, where she launched and built a branding firm that specialized in search engine marketing and visual graphic design while serving as an adjunct marketing instructor at Indiana Wesleyan University. She has more than 15 years of experience working with highly matrixed teams at nonprofit organizations, local companies, and entrepreneurial ventures to organize their digital footprint, to maintain consistency in brand identity and consumer perception, and to create marketing strategies that help drive growth. I am confident that Ms. Payne's expertise as a marketing consultant will translate effectively in our efforts to build stronger teams, better processes, and enhance our ability to communicate all the wonderful things that are happening in the Plum Borough School District in a more modern fashion. Her background in the classroom will serve as a value add to our organization as we work to deliver on our district's strategic areas of focus. Ms. Payne is certified in content and email marketing and is a member of the Pittsburgh Chapter of the American Marketing Association. She earned a BS in both business administration and graphic design from Florida A&amp;M University in Tallahassee, Florida, and holds an MBA and a master's degree in marketing from Golden Gate University in San Francisco, California. Please join me and the rest of the board in welcoming Ms. Charlene Payne to the Plum Borough School District.
Thank you so much, Dr. Highland. I am more than honored to be a part of the Plum Borough School District family, and I'm excited to hit the floor running to help our students have a successful academic year. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, welcome.
Recommend the approval of Ms. Charlene Payne as the Plum Borough School District Board Secretary effective September 1st, 2018.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is-
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of resolution number 2018-7-24-3 to terminate the employment of employee Mark Garvey.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of memorandum of understanding to remove the athletic director from the Act 93 group and make it a contracted position.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
A motion is second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I would just like someone to explain to the public what the difference is and why it's being done, I mean, I, it was explained to me, but I don't think I could do it.
So, having an MOU with the Act 93 group allows us to move the athletic director out of the Act 93 group and gives us the opportunity to create more of a flexibility in terms of hiring with a particular individual. Gives us a little bit more of an opportunity to have input into the length of time that the person would be working, the salary requests, and any additional items that we may have that we are interested in having that particular person do.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend recalling from the furlough list Gina Dessel, special education teacher at the high school, effective August 23rd, 2018.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend recalling from the furlough list Christina Davis, long-term substitute, special ed teacher at Holiday Park Elementary School effective August 23rd, 2018.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval of items L through X as listed below.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. You want to report, Mr. Kohler?
No, we've covered all the personnel issues, thank you very much.
Student Achievement and Activities Committee, Dr. Anderson, chairperson. Recommend approval to enter in a three-year lease agreement with HP Financials for Chromebooks at a cost of $84,079.38 per year.
I'll make that recommendation on behalf of Angela.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Dr. Highland and the administration and the business manager for working on this, great opportunity for our students.
And Mr. Burkey.
Yeah. I certainly want to thank Mr. Burkey. He has done a tremendous job in researching. He's a pretty hard negotiator, too, with some of those folks out there that provide, those vendors that provide the Chromebooks, and I think he got us a very, very good price. So, Chris, I want to thank you for all your hard work and all those calls that I make and bug you. You always have an answer for me, and I appreciate it, and I want to make sure that I tell you that publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Burkey.
Yep.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of the annual day student education agreement with Glade Run Lutheran Services.
I'll make that recommendation.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of Charlene Payne's attendance at PSBA School Board Secretaries Conference, August 2nd through the 3rd, 2018, at an estimated cost of $370.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion?
No, but I'd just like to thank Charlene for going, I'm sure she's, can't wait to get there.
Dive in headfirst.
Day two, right? Day two.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of grants numbers 1 through 2 as listed below.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion?
Of course, we would just like to thank our teachers for obtaining these grants. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes.
I wanted to point out that since our last meeting, the district and specifically Pivotik Elementary received a $90,000 grant for a brand-new playground that is to be built in the fall, in September, and I'm hoping, I'm sure she will, Ms. Gestrich will come up and just share with the community some of the activities coming up related to that grant, and I'm sure she wants to thank all those individuals in the community that have been so helpful in helping us secure that grant.
Thank you, Dr. Highland. Last Thursday, we gathered about 25 children and their parents for Design Day. There were many other, many other volunteers that came by as adults to help us with the planning process, but the most exciting part of that day was definitely what the children were able to do. With a committee, Mrs. Evans, who is one of our kindergarten teachers, was able to work with, the gentleman just happens to be her brother, who is the executive director at Habitat for Humanity. They were able to put together an activity for the kids to build with Legos, exactly what they wanted their playground to look like. And their designs, their ideas, were all shared with the adults that were working in the other room, and we were able to put together several different design implementation, or design ideas that they would be able to put together as options for us that they will share with us in the next few days. We will then select as a committee which design best suits our needs for an inclusive playground for all of our students and all of our children in the community, and we will be working weekly and together with our project manager through Kaboom, and we will also be working as a committee in between those conference calls each week to make sure that we have all of our logistics worked out. But we are very excited, September 28th, which is a Friday in September, we will be bringing in, both on Wednesday and Thursday. Prior to that, we'll have about 30 volunteers onsite for two prep days, and then on Friday, the 28th, we will have somewhere between 200 and 250 volunteers onsite at Pivotik to build the playground. So, we are very grateful to Duquesne Light as our funding partner. They supply the majority of the volunteers. Habitat for Humanity, as our corporate partner, is supplying a lot of the equipment that is necessary for building, and they have the expertise as well, so we have a terrific partnership. It should be a wonderful opportunity for our kids to see what happens when the community comes together for the better of our children. So, thank you for the opportunity to share that, thank you for your support. We look forward to having a beautiful addition to our playground that all of our students will be able to enjoy.
Thank you.
Great work, Mrs. Gestrich.
Dr. Highland?
Yes?
Can you guys speak to the volunteer process to the community? What the opportunity is going to be?
Yes, if you could give me about two seconds, I'd be happy to provide that information.
I'm assuming that's Mr. Wisnewski.
That is Mr. Wisnewski.
So, for anyone who is interested in volunteering, we do have information that was going to be, and as I had mentioned at our discussion meeting a couple of weeks ago, we were going to post it on the website, but we do have to follow the protocol that Kaboom has set up for us. And so, there are some limitations as to some of the media releases that we do and so forth, so we're following their lead. And so, our information was not set up on the website, but instead, the volunteers that were at Design Day were shared, the committee sign-ups and the opportunities to lead a committee if they felt that that was an area of their expertise. But now, those committees are now open to the public. So, we have opportunities for, if you own a restaurant and you want to donate food or paper products, we have to feed our volunteers, both on the prep days and on the build day, both morning for breakfast and for lunchtime. We also have opportunities for people who want to come in, even if you're not a skilled laborer, you can come in and paint, you can help move mulch, there, you know, you can help serve lunch. There are lots of different opportunities to volunteer, and we have a, an email address that is a, that's pivotikplayground@gmail.com, and if you would email that address, you can certainly let us know what your expertise is. And then, in addition to that, our PR committee will be reaching out through social media throughout the community, and then we will be sharing things on our website for those people in the committee, in the community that would like to volunteer. So, that information is still coming, but we do have several people who have volunteered already, and we will be reaching out within the community for donations. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In Dr. Anderson's absence, anybody going to give any report, education or no?
Thank you.
Okay. Safe and Support of Schools Committee, Mrs. Rossler, chairperson. Recommend the approval of resolution number 2018-7-24-4 to give the superintendent the authority to locate qualified school police officers of good moral character and create administrative procedures in order to bolster the Plum School Police and directing the solicitor to petition the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County to approve all officers and authorize the arming of all duly trained and appointed school police officers pursuant to the Pennsylvania Public School Code of 1949.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Second.
A motion is second, is there any discussion?
I just have a statement. I just first like to thank Dr. Highland for your superintendent's report. That was very well said, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are voting on creating a school police force because we, as a board, are taking safety seriously. We, as a board, along with Dr. Highland and his team, are working together with Plum Council, the mayor, the police chief, and the borough manager to create a model of safety that is second to none. I want to take a minute to mention Dr. Rick Walsh. He is the administrator who leads safety in the Plum School District. He's not here, he's not here tonight, but I want to publicly thank him for being so passionate, hardworking, going above and beyond, working diligently, making safety a number-one priority in this district. With that being said, I want to thank the board here tonight for their support. And in closing, safety first, safety always. Thank you.
I'd like to again thank Mrs. Rossler for her hard work on this. Two and a half years, it's been a long time coming, and we finally have the right team in place to get it done, so thanks for your persistence.
Thank you.
I have a comment, please. I've worked with numerous companies over the years, a lot of school districts, a lot of colleges, universities. I've never liked the idea of an armed force in a, on campus. However, I'm also a realist and a pragmatist. And the society we live in today has no respect for the sanctity of life, be it abortions or be it school shootings. And because of that, I'm going to put my objections aside and vote for this.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Any additional report?
That's all I have, safety is always a work in progress, so we're moving forward. So, again, thank you to the board and administration and everybody else involved.
Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Schlock, chairperson. Recommend the approval of contract for mug supplier bid for 2018-19 school year to Turner. On behalf of the committee, I'll make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of contract for ice cream supplier bid for the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school year to Hershey. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of the Treasurer's Report and Bill Payments for June, two thousand and eighteen. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of the GOB bills for July, two thousand and eighteen. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of the Agreement with One-to-One Risk Solutions. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion?
Steve, no discussion, but I would like the public to know what that one-to-one risk solution is. That it's a, kind of, it's our insurance for-
Like a web platform that they're tracking claims, you know, under another damage waiver program for one thing, and then they're maintaining an online system for credit card and like debit card purchases and things like that. Yeah.
Good enough. Thank you.
Yep. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval to dispose of obsolete technology equipment. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend approval to contract with Credit Tech Collection Solutions to collect unpaid food service debts at new cost to the district. On behalf of the committee, I will make the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion?
Just to make a blanket statement, our food service debt has gone up significantly in, based from the last past years. Yeah, more than double. So that's why we're doing this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. You know, I don't have any, anything, any funding for finance either. So Facilities and Operations Committee, Mr. Coulson, Chairperson. Recommend the approval of bid award to Slippery Rock Roofing as the lowest responsible bidder for the roofing contract for O Block Junior High School in the amount four hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six, and for work to commence in the summer of two thousand and nineteen.
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Second.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the purchase of roofing materials from the Garland Company through use of U.S. Communities Procurement Process in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight dollars and eight cents, plus two thousand, and shipping for the fall of two thousand and eighteen.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval for request for qualifications for a needs assessment for capital projects at new cost to the district.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion?
Just to mention again, it's no cost to the district, like Steve said.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of contract with School Solutions in the amount of five, five thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cents to create a work order system for the Facilities Department.
On behalf of the committee, I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion?
I just believe this was an expected expense with going with our own facility director. Typically, if you go with a vendor, they have a tracking system. So now we're actually with our own facility director, so that's why we're doing this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes.
And that's all I have for facilities for July, Mr. Schlau.
Okay, cool. Thanks, Scott. Eastern Area Schools, Dr. Anderson, Liaison. There's anybody for anything? Forbes Road, CTC, Mr. Rogers?
We did, the only meeting we had that was a new roof that's going onto one building, they lost twelve days because of the weather, but they're still progressing. So they should have that for the fall for classes. That's all I have. Thank you.
Intergovernmental, Mrs. Caldwell?
No report.
Policy, Mr. Wiznesky. Recommend the approval-
Uh. Go ahead.
Recommend the approval of Policy seven oh nine point one authorizing the Plum School Police Officers who are properly certified in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and are approved by the Plum Borough School Board to carry a firearm under person while exercising their duties and authorizing the Superintendent or designee to assume the responsibility for ensuring compliance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and its policy, related policies, and to establish procedures for school police officers in the Plum Borough School District.
On behalf of the committee, I make this recommendation.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of Policy eight oh two recognizing the organizational structure and great configuration of Plum Borough School District Schools.
On behalf of the committee, I make this recommendation.
Second.
A motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of Policy eight oh four recognizing the school start and finish times of school days of Plum Borough School District Schools.
On behalf of the committee, I make this recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Recommend the approval of Policy eight oh eight allowing the district to revise the food service collection procedure to permit the use of a debt collector.
On behalf of the committee, I make this recommendation.
Second.
Motion in seconds or any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All that oppose? Motion passes. Is there any citizens' comments on non-agenda items? Okay, I've included the agenda. The upcoming meetings coming up in August, we have a discussion meeting at six o'clock PM, August seventh, next month, in the Plum Borough High School Library. And then the action voting meeting will be seven o'clock, seven PM, August twenty-first, next month, in the Plum Borough. This council chamber is right here. So that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.